Great.
She'll be.
Great.
Happy work. There I am. Um, so I have been a classroom teacher and ELD teacher and instructional coach and now the bilingual programs co-sah in Oregon City. Um, this is my ninth year in the district and um, these are my two kids who are also in our schools. Uh, my son goes to OCHS and my daughter um, is at Gardner. They've both gone through the bilingual program. Um, and my background in education is in linguistics. And I have a master's in teaching in elementary and English language development. And I also have my reading endorsement and dual language certification. And so you can see I'm very passionate about language learning. Um, and supporting kids. And so that's what I'm here to talk to you about today. So. Our essential questions are what is the ALPA assessment? ALPA stands for English Language Proficiency Assessment. We're gonna talk about what emergent bilingual students need to be able to do. And what do teachers need to do to support them? This is important because the ALPA assessment is required for all students who are English learners. And so. It's. A barrier for them if they can't pass the test. So I'm gonna talk to you about the test itself. So. The ALPA assessment is created by the ALPA twenty-one consortium. It is a group of um, states that agree on this. Uh, test as the way to determine whether or not students are proficient enough in English to be able to access content in their classroom. And so it includes four language domains, reading, writing, listening, and speaking. And the test is grouped by grades. So there's a kindergarten test, a first grade test. A two-three test, a four-five test, middle school, so six through eight, and then high school, nine through twelve. As the test progresses through the grades, it also progresses in difficulty because it's aligned to the Common Core standards. And so you can imagine it gets harder and harder as kids get older. Um, one thing that is really interesting that um, not a lot of people know. Kindergartners have to take the ALPA test. And. Twelve graders have to take the ALPA test. For students in kindergarten through fifth grade, the test can take an hour to an hour and a half. Now, we don't sit a student in front of a computer for an hour to an hour and a half. We break it up into smaller portions. But that's an hour to an hour and a half for a five-year-old to sit and demonstrate their English proficiency. For a student whose. Language is not English at home. So it can be really stressful. Um, and for students in sixth through eighth grade, the test takes two and a half hours. And for our high school students, it takes three hours.
Extremely stressful.
Extremely stressful, right? It's a really high-stakes test. One good thing is that. At high school, Oregon uh, Department of Education applied for a waiver to allow students to carry over their proficiency in certain domains. So if they pass the listening portion, for example, they don't have to take that again in high school. They just have to take the other domains that they still need to show their proficiency. Unfortunately, that's not the case for kids who pass domains in lower grades because the test changes over the years. Then they're no longer considered proficient if they've changed the test.
So this is nine through twelve that needs.
That it carries carries over?
Or six through twelve?
Just nine through. Yeah. Um, okay, so that's a lot about the assessment. Um. The way the assessment looks at students' proficiency. And when they report to us their levels of proficiency, it's broken down into five levels. And there are a lot of words on here, I know. So I made a handout for you guys. The top part is gonna come, um, we'll talk about it a little bit more later. That uh, describes the English language proficiency standards and how they align to the Common Core standards. You'll see that they're embedded across all the different domains.
Is this one in our slides too? Cause we have.
It should be, yeah.
Yes. Can I question, do we talk a little bit about how which students have to take this? How are they designated as an emerging bilingual versus maybe a student who's bilingual but doesn't?
Yes, thank you. So when students enroll in school. Um, their their families fill out a bunch of paperwork for enrollment. And one of the forms that's part of their enrollment process is called the language use survey. It's required by the state. And on that form, parents indicate whether or not there's been any language other than English in the home. If there's only been English, then they just have English as the three areas where they're telling us how their student has been impacted by language, a language other than English. If they have English and another language at home, they can indicate that as well. Or if they only speak another language at home, they tell us that on this form. So as new students enroll, we're monitoring those language use surveys to see if we need to evaluate students to see if they qualify for English services.
How many languages do we have right now?
Oh my gosh, that was a pop quiz.
Oh, sorry.
I think it's about fifty.
That's the number that's coming to mind when I do it.
Yes.
Thanks.
Um, yeah, it is really exciting. I just put something in our teaching and learning newsletter about it uh, last week. And so. Um, yeah, it's it's about fifty-five for our district. Um, we have about eight hundred students that have ever been English learners in our district. Um, and so it's likely that teachers have students who have another language at home, who are emergent bilinguals across the whole spectrum. Whether they look like they are native English speakers or they're still learning the very beginning basics of English, um, they're in all of our classrooms. And so it's really important that we support them. Um, so.
I have a question.
Yes, yeah.
So. I think so. This is a real life scenario, but it's curious to me. So my grandchildren started out in Japan, spoke Japanese in their world, spoke. Uh, English at home. And then they moved here and now they only speak English and they're very, you know, I mean, they don't remember much Japanese. So. When they come to school, when she goes to school next year and she fills that form out, would she be considered emerging or considered?
Um, it's a good question. It depends on how parents fill out the form.
Ah.
So it will say, um, there are three questions. The first one is, is there, um, I wish I had that form in front of me, but um.
It's okay. A good idea.
It's basically like, has your child ever had a language other than English in the home? What was your child's first language that they learned? And then the third one was is some something more along the lines, are are there any adults in the home who speak a language other than English? Um. And so depending on how families fill that out, it can be ambiguous about what a student's needs are. ELD teachers do oftentimes reach out to families to clarify.
Sure, that would that would be my next question.
Right, like what is the level of English of your child? Especially if on the form, a family indicates one language, but then the ELD teacher in conversations with the student, the student's like, I don't know that language.
Yeah, I don't know. Which is what my four-year-old granddaughter says now. I can't say that anymore.
And that sort of thing does happen often. Um, a lot of times in our dual language program, families will indicate Spanish on their language use survey because. Their child has watched Dora the Explorer and things like that. And that's not what we're trying to capture here, right? And so we don't want to unnecessarily screen students that wouldn't, it wouldn't be appropriate to qualify them for English services.
Excellent.
The important thing to know though is in uh, once we do determine we want to screen a student, they have to take the ALPA screener. Which looks very similar to the ALPA summative test, which is what we're talking about today. And it is very difficult. It's very rigorous and it assesses students' language level at the grade levels they're entering. And so a lot of times if younger students don't have a lot of academic experience, they might qualify for English services even though they really. Are just an emerging learner. And so. The hard part is, once they qualify for English language development services, the only way for them to graduate out is to pass this test. There is no alternative. We can't provide a portfolio of work for them or any other evidence that we see in the classroom. They have to pass this computer-based assessment.
But can a parent choose not to, like, place a student in services and or take the test?
So that's a great question. Parents can always refuse ELD services. Uh, they receive an annual notification letter that their child qualifies for services. And if they decide that they don't want them in the ELD classes, they just notify the teacher or the school and the student doesn't receive services. However, they cannot opt them out of ALPA. They can request an exemption from testing based on disability or religious reasons. Uh, but they have to write a letter and it's not the same type of opt-out process that other state tests have.
So it's important they fill that paperwork out right.
Yeah, and don't forget, like, we're talking about families who probably speak a language other than English, right?
Often.
And so they don't have necessarily the same access to that information about what their options are without us communicating clearly to them what those options are.
Are these forms that you're talking about provided in multiple languages?
Yes. So it comes through synergy, actually. When parents register, they're using Parent Registration Portal. It's all online. It does translate into many, many languages. And if it's not in a language that is, that the family needs, we can get it for them.
And there's resources for these parents if they have difficulty maybe navigating a computer or something, if they.
Yeah.
To to help fill this information out?
Definitely. A lot of our schools offer parent registration, um, nights where we invite families in and we do the registration process with them. Um, so we can help answer questions as they're going through the process. Um. So there are resources available to families that, you know, need extra support.
And what about technologies? Or what if there's a family that maybe lives in poverty, doesn't have a computer or any of that access? Does that be, they'd have access at their school to do that as well?
Yes, yes, one hundred percent. Or if it really, the technology is the barrier, we can provide a paper registration. Uh, option for them and then we take care of the technology for them on our side. So it's, um, we have done a really good job of removing as many barriers as possible. The biggest challenge is. Families don't always know the implications of what language you survey is going to mean for their child down the road. And that's something that I'm working on with the buildings about educating families about ALPA as well. Cause they they know that their child takes this test, but they don't necessarily know what it looks like or what it means. And so, um, this is an area of progress.
So what kind of outreach is being done now? Like this last year, say, what kind of outreach was done to make sure that there is new, uh, the implications of this?
Well, we have, um, I mean, we have our annual notification that goes out to families. Um, the current notification letter from the English Language Development Department is in multiple languages and it goes out annually. It tells parents what their child's previous score was from the, from the prior year, whether or not they still qualify for services. And then, um, it talks about what the different service models look like. So on that form, it tells them they have the option to refuse ELD services if they choose to do so. Um, and once they refuse services, that refusal carries over year over year. They don't have to continue refusing ELD services. On the refusal form though, it does tell them that their child will be still required to take the ALPA assessment because that's what's required by law. Any questions? Okay. Let's see. Oh, all right. So when we get the school reports, the student's language proficiency is divided into five domains. Uh, five levels for each domain. So for reading, they can be a level one to a level five. Writing, listening, speaking. And then those four scores for all four domains are. Put into one bucket to tell us their overall proficiency level. And so that's organized on this chart. By level one emerging in the top left corner. If they have ones and twos in all four domains, they're considering an emergent, emerging level, English learner. Down at the bottom, level two progressing, there's all different, a whole bunch of different combinations of scores that they can have. Um, however. They can't only have ones and twos and they can't only have fours and fives. Students need a level four or five in all four domains to pass. And that, um, is where we come to level three, the proficient level.
So, but you say to pass, meaning that you have reached that. Still to leave services?
Correct.
So that's what passing.
Passing means they have demonstrated a level of English proficiency that shows that they can access the content that's coming around from their regular mainstream classes and they don't need additional support. However, we do monitor students for four years after they pass ALPA. To make sure that they are still maintaining adequate progress in all of their classes. So we're keeping an eye on them to make sure that like, they pass ALPA, but maybe they still need a little support. Um, so. Uh, we are keeping an eye on them after they pass. And so what we're gonna look at tonight are what the level of, um, responses students need on the assessment. Look like. To reach a level four or five.
So if they aren't, if they reach, so so you've got ju- juniors and seniors in high school who have not yet. Say reached four and five, maybe they came in late, maybe whatever. Um. Let me, let me back up. I'm sorry. If they, if if they test out of needing, um, services.
Mm-hmm.
Does that mean at that point they would be able to apply for college without having to take? Um. The TOEFL? Or do you know?
I don't know that one.
That's interesting. It'd be interesting what the carryover there and the advantage for students in that way. Do you know if there's even a connection?
Yeah, I don't think there is.
Oh, that's interesting. Yeah.
Okay, cool. And remember that ALPA services are there to help students, um.
Right, our goal.
Learn the skills to access content. So sometimes kids, especially in high school, they'll get stuck on who just having this conversation with writing. Writing is that last production piece. And so you'll get a student who's like a foreign speaking, a five on listening, a four in reading, and a three in writing. And they they don't pass because of that one score, but might they be very successful in college? Sure. You know, they go to writing lab or uh, maybe they're in a math and science and they don't write as much. Like, it doesn't necessarily fold over too. Yeah.
Yeah, I'd imagine that there are some kids, writing skills.
Yeah.
Who do not.
Yeah, exactly.
Who still go to writing lab.
Yeah, exactly.
Had in their freshman year ago.
And that is actually a good point. Um, sometimes it's hard for us to convince high school students to put forth a very, um. Strong effort because they don't really see a huge benefit to passing the ALPA test because they have a teacher that they love who connects with them year over year.
Right.
You know, I mean, there's all sorts of reasons why, um, they might not necessarily be super motivated to to pass that test. But, um, we're working on that too, showing them what the benefits are. And I mean, honestly, what it comes down to is if they aren't passing the test, they really aren't accessing their classes at the level that they need to. And so that means that they're not getting everything out of their classes.
Sure.
That they could be. And they could be taking another elective and learning about something amazing that they didn't even know existed, you know? So that's, those are the sorts of things that we're trying to have conversation.
Kelly, I wanna reinforce that because basically if the students in middle school are also elementary too, but like, one of their times for an elective, a whole block is, has to be. So when you're, when you, once you pass, you get an additional elective essentially.
And they do receive elective credit for taking ELD, but they could be taking something else. I mean, there are so many options. And great things.
And so, and then up until now, students had somewhat of, if they were in ELD, that's, they only got one elective.
Correct.
So that is the honest.
It's, yeah, and oftentimes, um, students will, well, and families will, um, decide to refuse services.
So that they.
So that they can have, uh, an elective class. And then we're kids really aren't getting what they need.
Yeah.
Right? Because then they're not only not getting ELD services, but they're not like.
We don't know where they're at, yeah. We can't help them because we can't, aren't assessing.
Right. We don't really know their level because the ALPA test, yes, they take it every year, but that's just one snapshot in time, a very long test. And who knows if they had a good day or a bad day.
Or if they, or if they're like, I'm not gonna apply myself for this.
Right.
Yeah, so my question, you know, kids that have text test anxiety or any number of things happening, you know, outside of school, like, what are some supports or ways that?
Yeah.
You work to get the best snapshot we can.
Hundred percent. So one amazing thing about ELD is that the ELD teacher stays with the student throughout their elementary years and then again in middle school. And so the teachers know the kids really well. And so they know if they have, um, additional areas where they need extra support. Now, we're really limited on what we can do. We have to stay within the guidelines of the testing requirements. But if a student needs a separate setting or a smaller group, or they need to do a speaking section in a room by themselves because they get really nervous when they're speaking in another language. Into a computer, like, some teach, some, some kids are like, psh, no big deal. But other kids get really nervous and apprehensive about it. And so the teachers do know the kids really well and they, of course, communicate among each other too, to make sure that students have access to the support that they need to show their best selves on the test.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so now that you've seen the overview, here are our student scores from last year. We're just coming into testing season. ALPA is usually the first state assessment that students take. Don't forget, in third through eighth grade. Well, yes, first through eighth grade, students take the math test, the, um, ELA test. Fifth graders and eighth graders also take the science test. And if they're English learners, that means they also take the ALPA test. And so that's a lot of testing. And all of those state assessments take just as much time.
Yep.
They're all on a similar platform. The kids get very fatigued. So we have to be very mindful of giving them breaks in between and making sure that they, um, understand the value of why these tests are important.
Are these, excuse me, are these tests taken sequentially at the same time? Or are they like throughout the year, different points in time?
Like the ALPA, the math?
Yeah.
Um, yes, that's a good question. So that we have a testing window that's given to us by the state. And we have to do all of the tests within that window. So ALPA opens earlier than the other ones. That's why we do it first. Um, you might wonder like, why don't we wait until the end of the year? They've had a whole nother year of language. Well, everything is happening at the end of the year. So we do it right around February, March usually. Um, then. That's when the testing window opens for math, science, and ELA. And so that window opens, depending on the grade level, between like the middle of February and then goes through the end of the school year.
Yeah.
And so we do stagger them.
So when you're saying fatigue, you're saying just it's open, it's over several months. It's not like, boom, we're doing three tests in one day.
Correct.
So fatigue can mean just we're tired of taking a test.
Well, that sounds like if the ALPA all in one day, they can come back, right?
We don't have to do it all in one day. Um, they can pause the test throughout the process. Um, reading, writing, and listening are all, all the questions are kind of mixed together. They do them in a random order. The speaking section is a separate section and they do that so that if kids need a little bit smaller group or a separate area, um, it's easier for the facilitator, that testing coordinator, to make that happen. Um. The other thing is, we are also getting other assessments during these times, like the STAR assessment and classroom assessments. And so, yes, it is a few months of time that kids are taking these really big, um, high-stakes tests. But in between all of those, we're doing all these other assessments too. So we as a district are working on making sure that we're not overlapping when we're asking kids to be taking all of these tests. And we're hoping to find a way to use the information from one test to satisfy the needs of maybe something else that we're using. Cause it tires them.
Work, yeah.
Yeah.
Plus it takes them out of what they're doing.
Absolutely, yeah. All right, so last year, four hundred and fifteen students took ALPA, thirty-eight students passed.
Is that good?
Um, no.
Okay.
We definitely need to do better.
Okay.
Uh, one hundred and twenty students are considered long-term English learners. And that's a term that is, um. Common in ELD land. It is referring to students who have been in US schools learning English. For over six years. Because we know that, um, humans, when they learn language, take five to seven years to become proficient in a language. Um, and so if students have been in US schools, learning English, getting instruction, and they're still considered English learners after six or seven years. They fall into a new bucket called long-term English learners.
That's how many? So we got four hundred and eighty. So thirty-eight's not great. What would be a good number to see?
Well, it really is hard to say.
Right.
Because it depends on, students come in at varying levels of proficiency, right? So. So when we have a large influx of new students to the US, they're gonna be testing at a lower level of proficiency to start with. And so it's gonna take them five to seven years from whenever they started to demonstrate that proficiency. And so it's really hard to say. But there is a tracking tool that the state gives us to determine if we are on track for students earning their English proficiency designation. And it's called on track to proficiency. And you can look at it at the district level, you can look at it by building. And you can see the state average right now of students that are on track to English proficiency is right around forty, forty-five percent. And so, I mean, our district average is lower than that. And it varies building to building.
So what, the nine percent of the students that pass, is there a, like, how, an average of how long they've been in the Alpha program? Or is it, is it dependent, I mean, how do you, how do you measure success? Because nine percent is not successful.
Yeah, the state measures success based on this very complex matrix that shows where students started and how long they've been here. And then, year over year, they look at how many of those students have made progress toward English proficiency in our district. And so we want to see growth more than anything else. And for students that have started with us from the very beginning, we want them passing Alpha by middle school. And so the heart is really complex when you're talking about kids coming in every year, new kids that are new to the US or new to our district that maybe had their education interrupted, or there's all sorts of factors. And so looking at that state report card is the best place to look at, are we on track and which schools need most support when they're supporting English learners?
So with a lot of the other tests, we test students around, they're part of like parent-teacher conferences, there's supports in place to help families feel like they can support their students in learning new skills. How do we communicate with families around preparing, you know, continuing to learn English proficiency and the Alpha?
Yeah. One thing that we've done at a couple of schools, Candy Lane and Dartmouth, we've had parent information, like talking with families about what Alpha is and how they can help their students be more prepared and supporting their kids and understanding the importance of their effort on the, on the test. And just making sure that they are in know of when their child is taking the test, making sure they get a good night's sleep, making sure they get a, you know, have a good breakfast, opportunity to, you know, connect with someone important to them when they get to school. Things like that, just making sure that families are understanding what, what is all happening at any given time. Because the testing window is pretty wide. It just depends on the school schedule, how many EL students there are in that school, all of those things. And so it's really important for the school staff to be communicating with families what's happening, why.
So I just want to chime in, just real quick, and we're going to the thing. But one of the reasons, a couple of things have happened recently. So you know, we adopted new ELD curriculum because we didn't have a comprehensive ELD curriculum. So that's part of Kelly's work is to make sure that the teachers have those tools and they know how to support the kids so that they can reach those high academic levels. The other thing is, is we want to watch an individual student. So we want to see what we're seeing, she and I just talked about, and it's common. Writing tends to be kind of the biggest challenge, is getting kids over that hurdle to write in an academic way. And one of the things we're gonna do with this activity is, in a minute, is for you to see the level of demand that kids are expected to produce. Usually what we see with our emerging bilinguals is they come to school, they start learning English, and then they speak just fine. And so people are like, oh, they're fine, they, they're fine. And it's like, yeah, they're fine, but academically, we need to teach those forms and functions of language to make sure that they have access. So a lot of the work that Kelly's doing with the team is to sit with the ESL teachers, ELD teachers, and look at those students and say, okay, this is where this student's getting stuck, and how do we unstick them? But I think when you, when you see this, the test in a few minutes, you'll see that there's some pretty big challenges with the test. The test is very, very rigorous, which you're gonna see in just a second. And so it's helping our teachers teach to that level of rigor and then also make sure that we're getting, like diving deep into the data to see what student by student they need to progress and be able to have access.
And one thing we started this year for the very first time is goal-setting with students. So like having the student sit down and look at their Alpha score report and say, okay, what are my areas of strength? Okay, great, what areas do I really need to work on? What, where does this say I am right now? And then what are the things I need to do to move to the next level? And that's the work of the ELD teachers. They get really deep into what are the specific things you can work on in your language, whether it's reading, or speaking, or whatever your domain is that you need to really focus on? And what are the specific things you can do to move to the, to level up, right? And then the other thing that we're doing is working with all the classroom teachers on how do we support academic language in all classes? Because one ELD class period, or one ELD pull-out session a day for students, isn't enough to level up. They need lots and lots and lots of practice, speaking and writing and listening and reading in a supported way. Because just giving it to them at grade level, they can't access it. And so we have to teach teachers how to bring kids to that level so that the kids are leveling up. So it's all related to what they need to demonstrate on this very rigorous test. Okay. Implications, what if students don't pass? We talked about that already. And just again, not being proficient means they aren't fully accessing their content. We're gonna see all this in today's activity. This is a resource for you. In that bottom left corner, it says Alpha 21 sample test. You can take the test like a student and check it out. Okay, perfect. In the, on the right side are more of the sample tasks that we're gonna be working with today. So if you want to go in and see other examples of what kids are asked to do and then what the sample work at each proficiency level looks like, we can go to the next slide. All right, so our test today, we're gonna review tests and sample responses. And then they're broken down. I have a two, three grade band, a four, five grade band, middle school and high school. And I was thinking we would probably do three groups or four groups. It's up to you guys, how you want to group yourselves. While you're looking at the prompts and the sample responses, just consider the content understanding and the language demands. Because it's sometimes a social studies theme, or sometimes a science theme. So what are the things that kids need to know in order to be able to just start the task, right? And then what kind of language demands do they have? Have you ever learned a foreign language? Imagine if you were taking this test in that language. And then there is the proficiency rubric that goes with each grade band. And then you're gonna sort the sample responses that are in the envelope based on what you think each sample where it falls on the, on the rubric. So once you see it, it will be more clear when you get over there. Any questions? All right. You'll see when you get there. When you look at the prompt, it's gonna, something like this, it has the prompt at the top and then the rubric down the side of, at each level, what students are able to do. And then the sample student responses, you're gonna sort them on this side. You might notice that it says scaffolds at the top. That's because these are sample tasks. And so the intent is that teachers will use these to help kids know how to take the test. And they're suggesting that the teachers provide these scaffolds, sentence frames, word bank. They don't get those on the real test though, only on the practice. So, just so you know, it says scaffolds here, the best one for practice. Okay. Let's go.
Is it working now?
We did very well.
Oh, yay, it works now. So, let's discuss, what did you notice? What was surprising?
Thing that we've been talking about, I think by the time you got to level five, I'm not sure that there are kids in that age group who spoke English also. They were raised with English language, could write those kinds of things.
And that's, it's an important consideration. And it's because ELPA is aligned to state standards, right? So, all kids do need to be able to write and read and speak and listen at those high levels. I mean, if you look at the standards and what the standards are asking all kids to be able to do, that's what they should be able to do. And the ELPA is taking the language considerations. Like, what are the English specific things that kids need to be able to do those tasks at that level?
Is it, is transcribing an accommodation they can have, or is that not? Like, where they can speak if somebody else is talking?
Yeah, it's called dictation now.
Dictation.
It's great. And it aligns with what kids are doing on other tasks in their classroom. If they use any sort of speaking to text on a Google Doc. It's a, it even looks the same in the button. And so, if you teach kids how to use that tool effectively, then they can use that tool on ELPA as well. It does have to be documented, being on their 504, right?
Okay. So it's not just for kids, any kid taking it has to have.
So this leads me back, you're, you're in this. I, I was wondering, and mostly you're probably the one I need to ask, is that at what point then with kids who, um, how, how long does it take to be able to identify that maybe there are some learning disabilities or learning disorders that need to be addressed when they, when their first language is another language?
Yeah, we have, we partner with ELPA, and so we have a whole handbook around that, on how, when you test, when you don't, making sure of the right interventions. But we do have students who are dual identified. But we, of course, need, um, sometimes to do testing in their native language. So we have, for example, school psychologists that speak Spanish, or if we need to bring someone in, um, in another, uh, language. Because we do need to say, is this something that is actually language? Or is this a disability? So we have to separate the two.
Sure.
And so, um, yeah, a lot of it's timed, very specific interventions, and again partnering. Um, and so we're making sure that we are not just putting a label on the student and making sure, is this, is this language? Because they are learning English, or is this something else going on?
Right, and then you don't, on the other hand, you don't want to miss them either.
Yeah. Yeah, and there's a lot of eligibility's and different things that could be going on that might not be, um, affecting their language. And so something maybe like autism, or hearing impairment, or something, we're gonna catch those a lot earlier. But they're also gonna have it impacted on their native language. One thing I told a couple of groups, um, was something to keep in mind, second graders, um, those responses have to type that response into the computer. Like on a Chromebook. Second grader, seven or eight years old. The speaking section, they wear headphones that look like a radio traffic controller with a little microphone that comes around. Five-year-old. Right? They have to record their response. If they have a separate setting, then we can have them use the Chromebook without additional technology. Most kids are in a setting with a group of other kids. And so they have to have headphones and a microphone, because otherwise they can all hear each other's tests. And it is, um, it's a whole nother layer.
Is there, is there an alternative? Because like you said, nine states are part of this consortium. Is there an alternative that other states use that would be better or insecure?
I mean, it's the million-dollar question. Other states nearby to us use a, um, a very similar assessment called EDA. They have their own set of standards. I mean, other states have a language proficiency assessment that looks just like this, and other requirements on top of that. In Oregon, it's just ELPA that kids have to pass. Like, for example, in California, they have to pass ELPA. And they also have, they call it the California ELPA. And they also have to pass their state language arts assessment and-
In English.
In English. And they also have to pass, um, some sort of essential skills, um, requirements. So, it's a lot.
And I'm assuming it's the Department of Education that, that tells us which test needs, if it's state one?
Yes. I think we get direction from the federal government of what types of assessments can be used. And then the states determine what their adopted assessment is. All right, anything else?
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you. Oh, we talked about these considerations. Yeah, so the things that we're doing, that we already talked about, are high-impact strategies, um, improving our student engagement and connection and belonging and well-being at school, providing language supports, not just in ELD in all classrooms, setting goals with students, reviewing their progress. Now we talked about all those things. ELD classes are not enough. Kids need, need to be writing in all content areas. Even math. And our new, uh, elementary curriculum, I haven't had very much time with the secondary. But the new elementary math curriculum does a great job of kids having to explain their reasoning in writing. It's great. They need language supports. Here's my contact information if you have any questions about these things, ELD, language, or testing in general. I'm your gal.
Kelly's also our district test coordinator. So she gets to, she knows all about all the tests.
She had, she put them in.
Lucky me.
Yes, wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, that was really interesting, thank you.
Thank you for your engagement. All right, I don't know who I'm passing next to. Oh, wait, no.
So we kind of paused the discussion. So we did, um, we have several in front of you, as you know. This, we actually combined this, the other one earlier today, but maybe it didn't get, um, passed on. But we have the graduation policy, we have medication policies, we have some Title IX and civil rights coordinator updates for that one, before we talk about it for too long. And then we have LEED. We can go in order, or we can go? We have our principals here, so maybe we can start with graduation policy, and then they can take off.
We save it for last.
But we could also do that, if you have a ton of questions coming, then we do. We'll start with graduation. But maybe I should, uh, introduce you, in case you don't know. Um, Sarah Craig is our OXLA, our awesome OXLA principal. Uh, Mike Stedt is our, I can't think of a C1, but our case principal, also awesome. And you know Greg Timas is our awesome OCHS principal. So they wanted all come, this, um, graduation policy impacts all three schools. And so we want to make sure you have all of them here to answer questions, as well as, um, Greg, of course, led the committee last year. And Katie was on the committee. You saw in the other slides, um, all the other, or many of the other people that were on the committee. And we know that the reason that we needed this policy is because we had to align, we needed to align our policy with the state requirements and with our curriculum handbook. Everything was a little bit different, you know, in all the places. And, um, it's a good time to do it, because we also had requirements to add personal finance, to add higher education and career planning, higher education and career planning. And we needed to make some changes with our diplomas that are largely used for students who have disabilities. So, it's a good time to look at all of it, and make sure it's good to go. Do you want me to change the slide? I don't, I mean, I think this is-
Just wanted to provide a little background.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Go a little bit, little bit more? You bet. The, um, as Sarah mentioned, the, uh, our, our policy was, was not in alignment with the, there was an AR board, wasn't in alignment with the curriculum handbook that existed, and practice, there was a lot of confusing practice, um, that was going on. So, the opportunity to, um, take this and go, let's clean this up. Because there was, we were, um, you know, at, at, at Oregon City High School, not the high school, but this high school, there was, I mean, the, the, um, confusion, frustrations with students, with, um, families, counseling department over, I missed this grad diploma requirement to get this diploma, and the details, hoops, that if they missed at a certain stage, eliminated them from being able to get a diploma that became, well, so-and-so didn't tell me, and I mean, ju-ju-just, it, I, I, do you read the, the frustration? That's, that's what I'm trying to communicate to you all. I don't know, Mike, you experienced-
Well, yeah, kids, yeah, I used to be an AP at Oregon City High School, and kids had to make decisions in their freshman and sophomore year of what diploma type they would earn as a senior. And so when you would have students who would move into the district in the middle of their sophomore year, that's really cool for you, you're too late. Or you would have to make an exception. But then, once you make an exception for this kid, how do you decide which, right? So that created challenges.
So, um, all that, along with the new grad requirements coming from ODE that need to get, um, um, added into our, um, diploma, uh, policy, our graduation policy, put together a committee, I think you got information on that already, I won't go into that. We met four times. The first one was looking at our purpose and looking at our current policy, so that everybody understood that we have a little bit of a thing that we work on. The, the second one was, we, we looked at, um, grad policies from, I think there were six neighboring school districts that we considered, um, and, and looked at, to get ideas, to review. And, um, and so the, the team broke up and, and dug through all the different ones and, um, came back together in that same meeting and said, here's what we liked, here's what we didn't, here, highlight this, don't, this, this makes sense, this is parts confusing. And so, um, based on all that feedback, uh, at the next meeting, we had a draft. So based on that feedback, we drafted a, a policy of like, okay, here's what some things could look like, um, for us. And, um, that's where we got pretty close to what landed on with, with the, um, uh, policy that's being proposed at this, at this point. That committee, I want to just back up and say that committee was, um, a, uh, I had taken this question to our department leaders and said, they all recognized that there was issues. And, and so we, we solicited input from, uh, departments to have folks join the committee, so that we had that, so, um, did that. And then we, once we got to that draft, we took the, the, um, draft back to the, um, department leaders again for their feedback and so forth. So, um, I think that provides enough of a context. We, we couldn't bring it forward, because we were waiting for OSBA guidance, in very specific language. We finally got this fall sometime. And we're able to incorporate that in, which brings us to the current, um, policy that we're considering.
Since we do have this one up here, I think we just, real quick, highlight the key changes. I know you got this two months ago now. But, um, these are the ones required by ODE, which wouldn't start this year or next year, but the year after, but we have to know now, so they can take the class. And then the consolidation of the honors diploma and the, and the advanced diploma. Um, and there's some pieces there that you may want to talk about. And then the alternate certificate becomes a certificate of attendance, that's required by ODE, and then the modified diploma adjustments as well, required by ODE, right? So, um, of course, any of that we can talk about, and anything else?
And there, there, oh, sorry.
Your phone.
There are also two bills that have been filed that are both gonna affect graduation requirements if they get out of committee and get voted on. One of them is bringing back the essential skills requirement. And I don't know if that one will get out of committee, and then the other one was, uh, what was, details of those that affected graduation.
So we might be having the same discussion next year?
There are people aware of that, but those are both, both, both of those have been prefiled. Graduation committee, too, for you though?
Right, who's it, who's it?
So one of the requirements that you have listed is that we have to take civics, or the, the students have to take civics now, um, starting with, uh, January 1st, 2026. But yet you show, you show it on the 2025 students, is there gonna be enough?
That's, that's what we, it's, it's encompassed in, that's not a new thing for, for us, really. New requirement, like very specific language. From ODE, but providing, um, that content through our government class that kids have already taken for years is-
Okay, so all the, yeah, okay. You're just gonna rename it civics, so that way it's a little bit-
I don't, we're not gonna name, changing the name of the course. But it's, it's in.
Debbie, while I was diving into this, I had the exact same moment that you just had. And I, I think I even texted, like, oh my gosh, are we teaching civics?
Well, no, I'm just not-
Yes, yes, we're good to go.
Yeah, no, I was just, well, it, it's a great thing to learn. I mean, a lot of people don't understand, you know, how the government works. And so, um, when you look at it, I, I just, when I see that, I think that, you know, are we mandating the requirement early? And that's what I was trying to catch, is like, how are we gonna fit it in and make sure all the kids get it? But if it's already in there and it qualifies for the sixth class, we're okay. And then I guess the other question I have is, there was, um, let's see, where is it? Sorry. Gotta find it, sorry. One-half credit in higher education and career path skills. Is that a new requirement? And so what is higher learning, or higher education?
Yeah, so what we'll be doing is using our NABEANCE tool. And every year, in the four years, kids will get point one, two, five credit. And so that by the end of the four years, they have half a credit. And that'll suffice. But what we've done is we've taken the standards that are in that, those requirements, and we've looked at, we've actually asked NABEANCE to do a crosswalk for us. And then we went and said, okay, what do they, what do they not have? And so every year, they'll be assigned certain tasks within NABEANCE, and they'll do those either, depends on the school, but either during, um, Monday meeting, or whatever you decide to call it next year, it changes, you like to change it every year right now.
Love to.
Advisory or service learning time. And so they'll be required, but, but to your question, probably more to the point, is like, what do you want to be when you grow up? What kind of skills do you need to do to be there? What kind of things are you interested in? What do you enjoy? What jobs are similar to that? So they'll take some surveys and-
So that kind of takes the place of the senior project then? Or?
Senior project hasn't lived as a graduation requirement for-
Well, my daughter has do it.
It's been a bit.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's been like, what, four years? Well, four years ago, so, I just, yeah, she's 21, and she had to do her senior project.
I couldn't tell for sure.
Yeah, this is, this is part of that new, bad new requirement that students have to take because the goal is that they all have post-secondary plans, whether they decide to go into military, or college, or the trades, or-
So the higher educational?
Yeah, just kind of like, if I go this route, what's the perks? And what will I get, and what's the time? If I go this route, you know, just helping them plan, because-
And so some of those classes that we had discussed, like the trades classes and things like that, that'll, that'll go into, okay?
Correct, like, there'll be a lot of interplay between that and the CTE pathways and courses at all three schools. And so there'll be, like, opportunities for all kids to get those through their advisory, morning meeting, service learning. But there probably will also be extra-specific attention in those CTE courses of, hey, we're gonna make a resume now, that's a requirement for this, but we're gonna do a resume for this specific class, right? Like, we're gonna make a resume for, uh, entry-level job in the trades. We're gonna make a resume for an entry-level job in, right? So we'll work with our CTE programs to help, um, with that, too.
Some other examples of that, oh.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say, I think one of the things that, when we work with kids, we find that they don't know all the paths. So if you, if you want to go into welding, you could go military, you could go through the apprentice program, you could go to the community college if you wanted to, you know, do, I don't know, a medical career, same thing. Kids will say, I really want to do this, but like, I can't afford it. It's like, same thing. You could go to CCC and have your two-year blocks, you could go into military, you could go into all these different things, they don't know those. So that's really the point. So that's really the point of that course is to teach them the multiple pathways that they can reach their goals.
That's really great.
We, I'm, uh, we're really fortunate to have Erica from Ward, who are, you know, she's our career leading higher ed career coordinator. And she does so much work already in this world that allows, if, if, this is going to codify a lot of the work that she does with kids and what they're doing to get that in their transcripts and.
I would say a lot of the work that the group did was obviously meeting the requirements, like for example, PE. We were, as of the high school was 1.5, it's now one because that's what the state requirement is. But then it gives students a chance to take more of those electives because they have that. Same with like the foreign language, especially if they wanted a more advanced diploma, that was three years, now it's two years. Of course, some of those classes, again, the advanced or honors classes, they're, they're bands of classes that they could take versus very specific, like 80, psychology, so that there's more possibilities for them to be able to take those more advanced classes to meet the requirements for the higher ones. So it was definitely thought of like, how can we give these students more chances to take classes they want to take? And also need to get the diplomas that they're shooting for.
And, and maintaining a pretty appropriate level of rigor to try to ensure that kids are, are, are getting at a higher level to earn a advanced diploma.
Okay, so I have a question. Um, is this just specific to Oregon City School District? So our, this is our own concoction that the committees came together and did. So we were just saying, look at us, we're Oregon City, we offer this instead of going across the river? So we're not all the same.
They, they are.
They're pretty, they're pretty in line. I mean, graduation requirements. I think it just depends on what we have to offer, like elective wise and class wise.
But some of those, like some districts had much, much higher requirements to get their certain diplomas. I mean, the state has some basic requirements that you have to.
Are we still higher than the state?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Yep.
Even our, our Oregon City standard diploma is higher than the state diploma.
Good.
Because you'll see that named, I believe that's named in the policy, right? It's the state diploma, which we don't advertise, you, you, you don't, you know, but we, if that's a last year's chapter for a kid, then we'll go there, but that's not our, our aim. Our aim is that the standard Oregon City diploma that is at 26, which is too higher than the state diploma.
So I noticed that when, so again, back in the day when my graduated, or my daughter graduated, I can't talk. She graduated first semester of her senior year, pretty much, and like had one class her second, you know, semester. So I'm wondering, is it going to be the same footprint where kids are done halfway through their senior year and just have nothing to do until the end before graduation? Because I, I fear that if kids are not engaged throughout the entire school, they're, they're not going to keep on track to go to that secondary education. And so I'm just wondering if that's something that's going to change with the new block scheduling or anything like that.
This, the diploma won't change that.
Yeah.
What, the issue you're describing is exactly what you just mentioned, trimester.
Yeah.
And, and so moving to a block schedule will, will take care of a lot of that.
Okay, okay. So I was just saying, adding requirements doesn't push it out, it's just the way the scheduling is done.
And my son was at, like, pushed into early college, so he graduated or had enough credits to graduate early and then came here for like the last year of his senior year.
Yeah, that's sort of my daughter, but I mean, that's the thing, is like, not every kid knows they can do that.
Exactly.
And that's the problem is like, and then not every parent understands that there is a, a fund that we have that pays for part of the tuition to go here. And some parents can't afford the tuition outside of what they just get from Oregon City. So there's a lot of little nuances that happen to keep kids engaged before they go. So I'm just wondering how.
And, and some kids, they truly have no desire for.
More education, yeah.
And, and so moving to the block schedule will create a more typical pattern of, you, you, you know.
Yeah, okay.
Courses that will land, you know, where kids are still taking some required courses in their senior year.
Okay.
And hopefully also have the option to do CCC for some of their day, you know?
Yeah, there, there is room in some of their day because the block schedule affords more space. However, it also spreads things out.
Yeah, and I guess I, I'm, I just want to clarify what I'm saying so that I'm not being confusing. But part of what we're trying to work on with our CTE pathways, like the trades and like, is that maybe one of those classes would, you'd be getting high school credit and college credit, but like here on the CCC campus. And that's the goal, right? We want them, we know that if kids take even one college class, they're more likely to go to college because they know they can be successful. So we want them to still do that, but hopefully on a more sort of.
And then there's still pathways for kids that don't need that too.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Why did we rename the honors diploma to advanced? And is there any collateral damage going to, go to college? But is there something you get by having that?
Yeah, it's a good question.
And, and. Like you said, it's a rigor.
I, I don't know all the history of, of different, different diplomas, but I know some of the history of different diplomas in Oregon was, for a while, there was something called a chancery's diploma that had a certain requirement that if you got this diploma in Oregon, you had automatic enrollment into Oregon, Oregon State, Oregon State so far. That's long gone.
Long gone.
That's been gone for years.
Yeah.
And so the, when you talk to counselors, when you talk to Erica, they don't know the difference. Colleges don't know the difference between your diploma names and all the. They look at your GPAs, they look at what you're taking. They want to see, they want to see AP courses and, and rigorous course work. And so that's a little bit of a misnomer to say, well, we've got the super advanced, high-tech diploma title. It doesn't make a difference to them. So our advanced and, I mean, we had some debate about which one to call it. And landed on advanced because it felt to be.
So the kids at graduation that get the honor course.
That's different.
That's different than this?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
We're not taking away the honor course. That's a thing that still exists.
Honor codes are based on grade GPA, right?
A higher GPA.
Like checklist.
Yes. And the banquet still stays as well. I mean, I think that's important too. So that is also.
Just the name, okay. Only the name. I have some que- question, I really just, but I haven't never looked at them closely before now. I just don't understand. And so I'm wondering if you could clarify, students are required, I'm in the advanced diploma, to challenge themselves with four advanced placements, I have two questions. So it can be four of any, but if they, you're saying two or more additional AP courses from any, how does this lay out? This doesn't make sense to me.
Yep. So they, they need to take one from either language arts or social studies.
Got it.
One from either math or science.
Or both. Got it, got it, got it.
And then two from, you pick.
Got it. But if you're going to do language, you need to have two credits? Two world language courses?
Two world language credits is, is required for the advanced diploma.
Okay, as well as one from each language arts and, either language arts or social studies and math or science. So that's where the four.
So the world language is not part of the AP requirements. Those are, you need to take at least two years of consecutive language, world language.
Okay. I see. Okay, okay, thank you. That did not, that was not clear to me.
Yeah.
Which is the way it lays out.
Yeah, 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 I see what you mean. Yep, yep.
Yeah.
So maybe we want to.
Should be a different line.
Yeah, maybe you, yeah, or explain it like, you know, one from there, one from here, and two or more additional.
Different.
Additionally, you need, you know what I'm saying?
Right, okay.
That's what's not, so really it's six all the, all the.
You're taking two credits of world language.
You, you need four AP plus.
And then the four advanced.
Yep, but IMD on that list should be a separate.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, gotcha.
Can you still challenge courses for credit or no?
Um, when you say challenge.
I transferred from one school to another school in high school and they didn't line up exactly. So I had to sit and do a test to see whether or not I could challenge the course and say that I passed it for the credit.
Yeah, typically we don't, I don't know of that happening.
Okay.
I know that we take a close look at our course descriptions and align, you know, if somebody's coming in with a, with a course and we want to title it as such, you know, we're pretty familiar with, I mean, most courses are AP. They're supposedly either AP or IB and, and both of those, we, we can't, you know, transcript it.
Great, just for clarification, so the previous AP courses used to say you have to take 11th grade AP blah blah.
Yeah.
Right? And that's what got kids.
Correct. There was, there was one course sophomore year that if you didn't take 10th grade honors.
Language arts.
Language arts, you were out.
You were out, yeah.
So if you came in at your junior year, then that was not.
Correct. Or you would have to appeal.
Yeah.
And then that created a huge hornets' nest.
Who are we making exceptions for? Being a real, yeah.
Can, can we go back to that real quick? I just want to make sure I got what I think you're saying. So diploma requirements with the addition of further requirements as shown below. And then I'm thinking we should number them. Number one, the student must have a cumulative 3.5 weighted ticket. Number two, students are required to challenge themselves, blah, 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 A through C. And then number three, two world language courses from the same language.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
Yep.
Yeah, makes sense.
Thank you. Because I'm like, these aren't adding up to four for me.
I would have.
I need your questions.
No, that's not, I was just. I mean, I guess my, actually, I guess my biggest question is, how does this communicate to, to families, right? Like, as we're doing forecasting now, as a parent of a sophomore, like, that has to take these classes the next couple of years.
Of course, handbook, we'll start communicating with kids and families, we've got academic planning night. This kind of information will get shared out.
The concern is that the change in schedule, some grading shifting, like, a lot of communication needed to, so people understand.
And to be clear, the grading shift has been, we've stepped back.
Okay.
And we're redirecting our energy right now and, and making that shift to, to block schedule. Yeah.
And the, the other schools, as far as how that looks and.
Yeah, similar. And we, students who were wanting to take advanced placement classes would be taking those through OCHS. So we just make sure that we have sort of that line of communication with OCHS to make sure that that's scheduled for ready.
Generally have transportation then?
Yeah, and we have students already taking, yeah, so the OCHS, so yeah, that's already in place. I think for me, the, the thing that's really nice is that there's always been an OXLA diploma that's very, very similar, but not quite the same as the, so it's nice to have an Oregon City School District diploma. So as students are moving, there's not any kind of gaps or.
Yeah, same in case. Case has had its own slightly different version than OXLA and OCHS, although spiritually the same. And it'll be nice to be under one diploma. And for next year, currently at case, we don't have students taking classes at OCHS. Our students opt to take classes at CCC, but that will be an option next year with us being aligned on the, on the same schedule. Not that that's what's happening in this policy, but that'll, that's a nice benefit of OCHS moving to a block cases on a block and has been. And we're working to be aligned in that to make that possible. So.
Well, this is a new for like, what's the modified diplomas or?
We were just looking at it, you know? No, there is, there's like teeny tiny differences, but one of the main was it used to be a requirement that we would look like, you would have to have the starting conversations like fifth grade. It's like, we can have a leader that like, oh, this is really, we're continuing, we're starting to modify, modify, and it might be a conversation that is when the students are in high school that we might not have considered it before. It was like, you need a long history of modifications and that wasn't necessarily happening. So that's one of the bigger changes.
Can you explain that? What is a modified class?
A modified class is that if you look at the curriculum, you are typically lowering the standard or changing the actual content that is being developed. So it's not just about like less, it's actually you are modifying the curriculum to help the student access that content. So changing what they're teaching essentially. So, and there's a lot of different ways, a lot of, we have students who, not even students who are specialized programs, we have students who are maybe going more towards a regular diploma. And then we start having conversations of like, no, we're really needing to significantly adjust what our curriculum to act, for them to access. And then we start having conversations about modified. We're starting the conversations earlier, talking about diploma. So when they're leaving elementary, we start talk, talking about that, that's a requirement. Now we just added a note section so that elementary learning specialists can talk about that. So we can have those conversations earlier so they know that there's multiple options. Exactly. Because that has been in the past, that often maybe our students in our specialized programs, that would be the first time that the parents were hearing about modified and that it is, it is a different diploma option because they, they, it depends, they typically can get into a community college, but not to a four-year university with a modified. So that's an important conversation depending on our current status, if we're at war, not at war. That depends on if actually they would be accepted into the military. So it's really important for, to have those conversations with families because it could change maybe what they thought their plan was going to be. And then in regard to the things that they're talking about now with like transition, CD and talking about that, like, we already do that. It's a requirement of the IEP, we have a whole transition section, they have transition goals. We're already have an interview process for all our students, but they, once they hit 16 years old, they have a section on the IEPs. Were you doing that?
And then the state changed the alternative certificate to certificate of attendance?
Yeah. So that's typically for a student who maybe would be traditionally like a lead classroom. Really like even with modifications, even, even with like extensive, like trying to access that, it, it would be much more difficult and that it's more of a attendance, we want to get them there till they're 18 and then they have access until they're 21. Same with modified, if they need, we do have our bridges to transition program. Those students, if you have a modified or a certificate or a certificate of attendance, they can access there until they're 21. A regular diploma, you don't have access to that. And then the other per, what was I thinking about? The certificate is really pretty rare though, it's, it's more of a student that is, is typically probably not accessing a regular school.
Yeah, I'd say we give them periodically.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, still pretty rare. And then with an extended diploma, that would be a student typically maybe in our structured learning center because that's only 12 credits. And then they can also get credit within the structured learning center classroom as well. And so, and that's another one that can access our transition program. Am I missing anything?
I just have a question again. On clarification, I don't, I'm not sure the sent, the new added sentence does, I, I don't understand how it applies to the, and it's in.
Do you say what page you're on?
Yeah, it's at the top of page five, it doesn't give me a page. I'm in on the, it's under modified though. So, oh, okay, it's on 611, I guess. I didn't realize there's two. In the districts may make modifications to the assessment for students who seek a modified diploma when the following conditions are met. You've got number one, the last, the, the last sentence, the IEP or 504 team must inform the student's parent that the use of a modification on an assessment will result in an invalid assessment. If that's the case, why did you, why is the whole other paragraph there? It's really confusing to me. I mean, I read the paragraph first.
You're at the top.
Yeah.
Number one.
Oh, because it's lit, okay.
I've read it four times and I, I can't make it work.
Well, because you're changing the content. So that would be, they need to make sure that they're telling that this. So for you, you're going to an English and English arts class and we're saying you are completely changing the assessment because you don't have access. Like you need to tell the family and the student that they're, it's modified. It's not a regular, they're not going to get like the regular credit or the regular grade. Is that what that?
But that's not what I read in that. So just so you know, I don't know who wrote it, but the IEP or 504 team must inform the, I mean, so you read all through, of course, you do want them to be, right? But I'm looking at the grade there. The gray, pardon me.
Last sentence on the number one paragraph.
Yeah, the last sentence. And it says that, inform the student's parent that the use of a modification on an assessment will result in an invalid assessment. The whole previous paragraph talks about how you're going to adjust the assessment. So it doesn't make sense to me.
But I still think the assessment could yield information, which is what we use it for. But in terms of like meeting state requirements, it's invalid.
Right. And that's okay. It just, I guess if the policy, me reading it as a parent, that would completely confuse.
Yeah, this is how it's been written.
It's how it's been written? No, I'm just saying that last sentence doesn't.
You guys on the same paragraph?
Yes, I think so, number one. I'm just saying that by adding that last sentence, it doesn't to me connect with what you just said previously. Does that make sense?
I'm, I'm wondering if like.
I'm, I'm wondering, um, if like adding from the lens of the state or something like a. Because the assessment. Right. Why, it could, it could say, um, we will continue assessments for this reason. However. The state won't. The team must inform the parents that the use of the modification will result in an invalid assessment. Or even something less academic.
Yeah.
Will result in the assessment not.
Meeting state.
Meeting state expectations. Thank you, yeah.
I think that's what they're trying to say, that this.
You wanna rephrase that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can rephrase it and then propose a different one.
Yeah, it's, it's just didn't, to me, it, it was like, I'm gonna tell you all these reasons where your child can get help. It's not gonna count anyway.
We didn't have the lovely highlighted ones. I was like, I don't understand.
And ours had looked really green.
Yeah, so that's why I was like, I don't understand.
Oh, got it, got it, got it. I'm reading it from the thing you said.
Yes. Yep.
Thank you. I mean, that just didn't make any sense to me.
And I have one last one on this one.
Go ahead.
Uh, second to last paragraph, it says, the district will issue high school diplomas to a veteran if the veteran resides within the boundaries of district or is an Oregon resident at a high school of the district. I'm not understanding that, like. Are you just issuing blanket diplomas to veterans or, and that's literally how it's worded. Like, oh, you know what? You joined the military and I'm gonna give you a diploma now. Cause even though you didn't get it before you left, I guess I'm just questioning that.
It's a very last.
I do support that. It's hundred percent.
It's, it's interesting this track out is referencing an Oregon law.
The ORS, yeah, I saw that. But what does the ORS say? And I'm thinking like maybe called to duty during wartime or something, like, or a draft or something.
Yeah.
Why are?
And they're still eighteen and they have to like, I'm, I'm wondering if that's the case.
Yeah.
And so I'm just kinda curious, cause it's, the way it's worded, it literally sounds like you can leave here, don't get a diploma, and then we're gonna issue one if you're a veteran. That's kinda how it sounds.
They were honorary diplomas given to both the two veterans that came back and, and they might've been in their eighties or something later on.
Totally fine, but I'm just curious. I, I don't want this to be misconstrued as.
Yeah. And, and, and in pursuant to the law, why was that even scrapped?
You know, you don't see it for the law. Taking a diploma to be a parent?
I mean, yeah, right?
So, you know, I missed that, but you're right now.
Yes.
Let's take into that because I'm looking at the law. I just pulled it up and it looks like it's still valid. So maybe we just keep the reference to the ORS in there.
Oh, is it about the World War II vets?
Oh, do it, why does OSBA strike it out?
Okay, yeah.
For World War II.
That's what I thought, yeah.
That makes, that makes sense.
Okay, way more sense. So like keeping that ORS in there? Yeah, cause I don't wanna, cause if we get rid of it, then it automatically reads that we're gonna issue diplomas to veterans.
Right.
You get a diploma.
You get a diploma.
We're gonna get, we're gonna have to get like another one?
So.
Yeah, cause it's pretty, I mean, the, the guy that showed out that
She's gonna drop her.
Yeah.
It, it's basically saying you have to attend high school, be force serving, was discharged or released with honorable conditions.
Correct.
And you need to be served in the armed forces during, uh, World War.
War time.
One, two, Korean conflict, Vietnam war.
Yeah.
Operation Urgent Fury, Operation Just Cause, Operation Desert Shield, Operation Restore Hope. Like, there's a list of them.
Yeah.
So I don't know why that was.
Some of it is. I haven't even heard of some of those.
Yeah, I think it's not their story.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it's still unheard of.
It on the Air Force card. Her own running around in Air Force.
I know.
We'll check into that. Yeah, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
One point of clarity, just to make sure everybody is super clear, that last, uh, fact, uh, there was a sign up there, it was just up there a minute ago. It talked about the class of, so the changes only affect class twenty-seven and beyond.
Yes.
So, and that means for advanced, and so R's diploma is gonna exist for this year and next year.
For two years. Okay.
So don't, they won't go away, so don't be shocked.
Have you had any pushback or have, have, do you think you're gonna get any pushback? And do you think you're in a position to defend the reasoning behind it? I mean.
Yeah, I think pushback would come there, um, uh, from students. I don't see.
Parents most know that are used to it.
And I, I don't think, I don't know. I don't know that parents are gonna be, like, it's, it's a, it's a simpler process. It's more clean, that, that.
It's extremely rigorous.
Uh, that, that, that is, you know, very much aligned to our.
Yep.
I, I think that some pushback frankly will come from staff who are concerned if, well, now some of these honors courses may not attract as much attention, um, like, like, you know, or, you know, these dual credit courses may not. But I think that, um, we can easily say that AP courses identify a very clear, rigorous coursework. Um, if you step away from AP and going to dual credit, it could mean a lot of different things when you get into dual credit courses. And I think that kids still want to, cause the, um, honors still impacts weighted GPA. Um, and AP courses, of course, still impact weighted GPAs. So that is still a way, uh, and a reason for students to say, I wanna take these honors courses. I wanna take the, the, the courses that are weighted so that I can increase my weighted GPA, which impacts their college.
When they take those courses, do they need to, I, I know that it's been a long time since my kids have been in school, but that my kids had to go to, they had to take the test separately from the class.
In the AP, for, for AP, yeah, we still take AP tests.
Okay, and are those AP tests required? Do you have to take them?
They're optional.
That's what I thought. Okay, that's what I was asking. So, so the diploma is, is not dependent on you taking the test.
Correct.
It's because there are tests offered in the class. It's just not the same.
Right. You, you take the class.
Yeah.
You can choose to take the test. You need to take the test to ultimately like get college credit in university.
Right. Right.
But if you're anxious about taking the test, you don't feel like you're ready to take the test, you don't wanna take the test, whatever, you can opt out of taking the test, get your grade in the class and still qualify for the diploma.
Thank you. I assumed that was probably too bad. I wanted to clarify.
So I know you offer classes in the summertime to kinda help catch up on credits and things like that if kids are starting to fall behind. Is there anything like night schools or anything like that that are offered as well as your period?
I mean, we were just talking about night school today.
The only reason I ask, like, cause I, I actually like had to do that. Like, so I went through some stuff during high school. My junior year got really messed up with my, um, my, my, uh, uh, classes and failing and things like that. So I failed a couple of classes. I had to get back in good graces to get my, to graduate on time with my diploma. And I'm just wondering, I know we have summer learning, but when you're that far away or from, you know, you're almost going into your senior year, is there courses available for students that try to catch up and try to get the credits if they need to graduate?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna let these three answer because I know they all have options. And I'll say I learned today that a few years ago, we didn't try night school for six months or so.
Okay.
To see if there would, because kids were saying, you know, I, I'd come if it was at night and that didn't come to fruition.
Okay.
However, if we, you know, if we have a need, it's certainly something, we wanna have lots of options.
Yeah.
For kids to finish however it works for them.
Yeah, cause I did a zero period and I did night school. And so just to get those two extra credits and so, it was very long.
Yeah. Yeah. Wow. So long day.
And so, but I, I had to do those things. And then I challenged classes too. And so there was a lot of moving and shaking for me. And so I'm just wondering if there's a, any options in regards to students now. Cause I mean, students, you can't, you don't know what you're gonna end up doing and what's gonna affect you in your life. And I'm just making sure that you're giving all, all opportunities, so.
I mean, I think the reality of moving, the, the block schedule first off, like grants more opportunities for kids to be able to earn credit, right? Like eight periods, eight periods a, uh, a day or eight period, eight periods a term over the course of your four years gives you like opportunity to earn thirty-two credits and you need twenty-six for the diploma. So if you get behind, you have the opportunity to catch up within the day. Um, we also, I mean, there are like credit recovery opportunities that are offered at all three schools. Um, how you access credit recovery, like working with your counselor and figuring out the right time and courses, like those things are individual advising based. But there's quite a few opportunities that are built in within the school day as well as like opportunities for students to earn credit through like working or through taking classes at the community college, which we've, we've talked about and worked on aligning across our schools so that it's consistent if you take a class, a new student at Ochsla, at case, at OCHS, that you're getting credit for those, for those courses and, and a fair amount of credit relative to the amount of work that you're doing. There's a, quite a few different ways for kids to be able to get caught up, even if they come in deficient or, or they find themselves in a situation where they have a rough term and need to make up their ground. And that said, I think we're all open to like continuing to look at what options our students are telling us they need, um, to meet their needs best. So.
Kids want a welding certificate. They have a ten AM to two AM class that we're offering.
Well, we have a number of students across the district that take those outside of school CTEP courses that we transcribe for credit for them too. Not just a case, but Ochsla and OCHS too.
I, I will say this on Sarah's behalf, cause she's been really.
Why?
Yeah.
I keep putting you around.
But there is a master at pulling kids back in and creating plans for them, whether that's outside of the school day, early class, online, through community college, like whatever she needs to do. So I, I'm appreciative of her leadership at Ochsla and, um, grad rates come out this week, by the way, I was gonna, you know, but, um, grad, I can't tell you what they're, but grad rates come out, um, grad rates come out, but Sarah has offered the GED program at Ochsla and that.
Year two.
Yeah, year two. Last year had twenty-one students that finished the GED, which, you know, a lot of kids really struggled because of the pandemic and through her relationship and creative problem solving, was able to get twenty-one kids with the GED. Now, they don't count as regular, regular, um, graduates, but we know that they're on a trajectory for success because if you have your GED, you can also go to community college within six.
And military or the project.
Or the project, yeah.
Or the military or the union, trade school.
That's right. Mm-hmm. So she's, she's getting some creative things.
By the sheer.
I'm already at the year.
Yeah.
I already. Good times. Any more questions for our principals?
Oh, you know, like a fifteen break down.
I think.
More questions?
Uh, no, I would just, I looked them up. So if you're gonna run it down, if you wanna track down Senate Bill twenty fifty-one. And House Bill thirty fifty-five. I would do the good.
What's it, what was the House bill?
It's House Bill thirty fifty-five and Senate Bill twenty fifty-one.
Thirty thirty-seven.
So I did look at the, in the policy and it does say that essential skills are still in the policy that it says it was, there's a statement that says that, um, Oregon Department of Education paused them for the twenty twenty-seven year, school year.
Right.
So should they come back, which is waive the requirements to twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So should they come back, it's already, it's already.
It's already there.
Applicable. So that one perhaps is okay, but we'll look them up. Thank you, Alex.
You guys are welcome to stay for admission of resident students, family medical leave control. I feel like you've got.
I just, I just wanna give those really.
Medication.
I hope that you're noticing that the three of them are working really, really hard to be in alignment and work together. And they've just done a phenomenal job and I think kids are holding in the best of it. So I just wanted to take that out.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for hanging out with us.
Thank you all.
Nice to see you all. It's basically.
Yes, let's do that one now.
I think so. You know, I did.
That's fine.
We should put that in first.
You sound like.
What do you want for that?
Really?
That's worth it.
Don't do that one next.
JFE.
Well, that is perfect because, um, this last beginning of January, um, we received news from OSBA that two policies, J, GBN dash JVA and JFE are both being placed on a hold at this time because we're waiting for additional federal regulations. So those two have been removed from the, the conversation. And then we'll come back to those.
J, JFE, the language that's in JFE, um, doesn't have anything related to that on JFE.
Oh.
So I think we're okay with that one. I looked at that one with colleagues. So that one's okay.
Oh, okay.
So which ones?
JFE.
I'm sorry.
I know.
She made me do that one.
JFE?
JFE.
The pregnant parent.
Pregnant.
JFE, we're going to proceed with JFE.
Okay. Okay, we are not?
We are, we are, we're receiving JFE.
We are.
But we are. Okay. Okay.
Um, so JFE just, um, basically updates that we shall not discriminate
Correct.
against any student, um, because of current potential past pregnancy parenting, uh, related condition. And they should not be excluded from public school on the basis of pregnant or parenthood. Sarah and I have had a lot of conversations because, um, it appears that historically, if a student was pregnant or parenting, they access the North Clackamas program. Um, which Sarah and I both agree is probably not what we want our student experience to be. If we have a pregnant or parenting team, then we want them to stay in their community. We wanna support them.
Yeah.
So Sarah's agreed to, uh, be that support and she, at the very end, that she's the designated and she has guidelines, um, that she works with individual parents of pregnant and teens to, uh, come up with a plan to support them and their.
Do, do we inform the parents?
Inform the parents?
Yes. Wait, wait. Do you mean pregnant? Does the school inform the parents? Does the parents don't know about it?
Oh.
If they're over fifteen, they can.
No, it's protected.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I think this one is mostly around.
They come home with the kids, they're probably. But maybe dangerous at the moment for the kids.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is mostly about our service for the education of the team themselves. Yeah.
So only, I think my, my one addition is that our hope is that students know what all their options are. And that, um, there doesn't become kind of a, um, I don't know, a push for them to, well, come to Ochsla if they don't want to, or you know, they go to North Clackamas if they don't want to. So, um, my role will be working with, um, students who are pregnant or parenting at all of our schools and working with staff at that school to support and develop individualized plans.
So, um, I know that, again, I'm assuming it's still there, but I know that can be had actual childcare program that was functioning. Is that what North Clackamas has as well? You know, that their program had, so we, in other words, if you wanted to be in high school, if you wanted to go to school, then there was a childcare program, um, yeah, onsite. And there was a, a parenting, whatever group.
Yeah.
Of, you know, where they, a teacher that worked with students like you're talking about doing. But is childcare probably is not an option within our district, I just tell me.
Not currently. I think, um, you know, if, to create that kind of program in district, using district staff is really expensive.
Yes.
And so until we have, you know, more students who have that need, it makes more sense for us to work with community partners and, um, contract, um, to make sure that their childcare needs are met. Like, yeah.
Perfect.
And how many students is it?
That's right. I was just, to clarify then, what you're saying is with each student, when that plan is, then we're also working with others.
That's true. Yeah, yeah. Um, right now we have one that we're working currently.
Do you think that's partially, I mean, do, do we ever lose young women and they just disappear?
I think we have historically. And I think the hope is that we stop.
Yeah. Cool. So there's, was apparently some stigma still.
Um, I think the guidance that I was given, and I think with all good intention, like I wanna be really clear that I think when, when, um, staff were working with students who were, um, pregnant or parenting, that, um, at that time, knowing that we didn't have a full-blown program here, um, they would really kind of help them make their way to the PACE program in North Clackamas, which is what you're describing where, um, they are in a community of other, um, parenting teams, that there's onsite childcare, that there's specific, um,
Yes.
parenting education that's happening. And I think that was done with such good intent. And I think for some students, it was a really good, um, community for them to be a part of. And I think for some of them, it felt like maybe they were sent somewhere else.
You don't want hate.
Yeah.
And so there were some students, I think, that were lost potentially in that transition. And I'm still working for Clackamas to kind of like identify who completed, who, um, but I think moving forward, you know, that's still an option, but I think making sure that students know there are other options too.
Thank you.
I don't think all three of the graduations last year, I loved, uh, I loved the Ochsla's. Yeah.
With the babies.
Moms would bring the babies up when they're getting their diplomas and talk about the obstacles they overcome. It was very.
We did have a program until two thousand and fifteen.
What?
We did have a program until two thousand and fifteen. And then when Cascade closed, then we closed the parenting team option.
That's what it was called. Yeah, it was parenting.
Any other questions?
Debbie, do something.
Thank you.
No, yeah, please.
I don't see anything.
No.
Concerned about.
No.
Smid.
And C.
So what is?
Is this the one that they're talking about? Is this the other one?
Yeah, it's the, so, sorry.
That's on my list.
Do it.
Did not realize that parents had, in their conversation about that.
No, it's okay.
So I apologize for that.
So are we still on JFE or do you want any other comments? Katie?
I asked, I'm sorry, I asked if you had any more questions. I didn't hear you say you did. Did you have anything else?
I don't, but I didn't hear you say that.
Oh, yeah.
So my apologies. It got noisy.
Okay.
We can move on. Listen, whatever order makes most sense. Yeah.
I don't think, um.
We just wanted to work through what our.
We just wanted to work through what our guests were.
Okay. So on, with this slide, um, the GBN and the JVA, that is the one that we are removing from new policies.
Okay.
Until we have further guidance on that.
That's the AC one.
And AC. Gosh, that just jumps up. Sorry. Policy AC you should have, that one is non discrimination in civil rights. And that one adds the civil rights coordinator position, which is required. And it talks about the addition of each district identifying a civil rights coordinator, all the training that they have to have for, to be the civil rights coordinator, when that training takes place and that um some of the regulations, it falls in line with title line. So it just outlines that, it just updates the language back to make sure that we are compliant and understand the training. Um, and what we need to do to follow any civil rights complaints.
Okay.
That one is really not changing a lot, it's adding.
Okay.
And AC's not civil rights. Pardon? That's AC.
But GBN and JVA are off.
GBN dash JVA.
All right, and that's a, this is a first, when it's, oh, these are all firsts.
Do you have any questions?
I'm assuming the set language is as recommended by OSBA.
Yes. Any questions to that? The next one is the lees that I have, well, one is a leave, so we'll go to, first one of this is the
Yep.
Uh, domestic violence, harassment, sexual assault bias. This one updates language to explain each of those. It also allows for the addition of a bias crime as eligible for the safe leave. So this is protecting folks who have been victims of domestic violence, harassment, sexual assault, a bias crime and stalking that they are eligible for to take a protected leave.
I would, just like a clarification on that, it talked about cer- certification may be needed around taking that leave. And when would this, that requirement?
Can you tell me where you're looking at?
Um. Have it in my notes from when I read it earlier, so I don't know where it was at in the.
At the bottom of page two.
So district may require an eligible employee to provide certification that the employee or employee's minor child or dependent is a victim. So that could be a police report, a stalking order, um, something that would indicate a court um hearing, legal documents.
And that's current practice or that's something that we're?
That, we can ask for that. I don't, I don't know that we have ever asked for that. Typically, um it's a pretty traumatic experience for employees and so we don't want to make them leave with it. Most of the time, we already know, in many cases. Any other questions? And then my third one is the family medical leave, GCVDA. Um, that updates the paid leave requirements and the OFLO requirements. Talks a little bit about how you can take them. Most leaves are taken concurrently with OFLO and paid leave. There is one exception that you can do a add um for two additional weeks for parental care. So it talks about the leads and doesn't specifically outline that, just tells you have to follow the ORS, but that is the primary adjustment.
Do you?
That's, that's all law.
Because I know you do.
Yes, it's all law. It's, I mean, we already do this in practice. It's just updating the policy to reflect.
Yeah.
Yes. My question was more just on the practice of what information is given, like the families and the students when their, when a teacher takes a leave.
That's a good question and we just say they're on.
Yeah.
For personal reasons, we cannot just disclose reasons for leave, that is protected information. And I'll be asking you, in some cases, now that we use American fidelity, we might not even be privileged to what the exact reason for leave is.
And the, in American fidelity, that's their leave request? Somebody's vetting them, right?
Yes, they have to go.
Because this isn't just a vacation.
Right, they go through American fidelity, they, based on the medical provider's information, they qualify the employee, they look back at all that. Date requirements, the time requirements, the hour requirements, and then they send it to us to verify that these that they actually worked, that these are their hours, that this is their rate of pay, and then they do the approval or denial. And we can occasionally overwrite it if it's in question, but they usually always make the determination.
Is there an outside agency that audits them to make sure they're not just rubber stamping them as they come along?
I would, I don't know the answer to that. I guess we could ask that question of American fidelity, that they have to follow federal law, state law. And with the paid leave, paid medical leave insurance, they would have to answer to the state as well.
So there probably is a outside.
Yeah, I'm sure somebody's.
Unless, I mean, I'm just, I'm making some assumptions and I could find out more if you would like me to, that they have to submit reports that have to be audited.
I'd love to find out.
But I could find out.
Heard others are pretty liberal.
Is liberal a bad word?
Liberal is.
Could be. I like liberal in certain ways.
Our challenge is that when a doctor writes a note, we don't, we don't audit the doctor. So if a physician gives us a note that says this person wants to take leave, for whatever reason, we don't have a choice.
Right.
And that's usually how all of them work, is that the doc, you have to have a doctor's note.
So if the doctor says they need leave, then they can't leave.
Mm-hmm.
And just knowing from like someone we supervise, not being part of HR, I just get an email saying this person is out on medical leave and then I get dates. I don't know any details. I'm just like, all right.
Unless that person has told you.
Correct, of course, yes. But that's, I don't, and that, I mean, I don't go and ask like, hey, why, this is, I get the dates and then I take care of, you know, how we're gonna cover, but in those kind of details, it's very clear of like, this is what the information that I need to go and know.
So H, only HR knows that information, you just relay the information.
Actually, sometimes you might, like, we don't all know. Only Misty might get the information. It's not like we don't, we don't discuss it.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Got it.
Even if we did, it's protected.
No.
It's protected, yeah, just because of purpose, so.
Yeah.
So that's why with the original question of like, oh, do, you know, parents are, it's like often like even the administrators, I'm now, I'm like, I don't know either. I mean, this is the dates and then planning to do.
Right.
And people can take unpaid fees. I mean, if they don't qualify, we have, we have um contract language that allows employees to also take unpaid leave if they don't qualify for a protected leave.
Does medical, the medical side allow them to use their sick leave? Sick time to go?
Yes. They have a choice. If they qualify for paid leave organ or the paid leave, paid family leave insurance piece, then they can opt to use sick leave until paid leave kicks in. Or they cannot use it at all and only wait for their paid leave and never touch their sick leave. They have the choice to go, or they can take both the whole time and get double pay. Until it runs out, right in sixty days, or weeks, max.
Per year.
Family medical is sixty. Family, FMEL is, is.
FMEL is the federal, a dedicated thing.
Right, and the, and it is sixty days.
Correct, all of them are maximum. And they can run concurrently and only one can be piggybacked to where for, I believe it's um parental leave and a student are, if you are caring for a child that is ill after um
Right.
birth, then you can add two more weeks. So you can take a tiller for two.
That's good.
And they can, yeah, it starts over after a year.
Yeah. Because illness, you sometimes.
Yeah.
Is it calendar year? Is it July first, July first, or is it?
It's the same incident to the, like twelve months from the incident.
So if mine ends, if my leave, I'm taking intermittent leave for a medical condition and it ends on April first, I can get a renewal from my doctor that says I need another sixty days of medical intermittent leave for the next calendar year ending, starting April second and ending April first of twenty twenty six. Now, they may not ever use it all, but they have, they're going to use it. That's for intermittent, if you were gonna take it for.
Yeah, like a week, a week there.
Which some people need to because they have some chronic illness.
Yes, chronic illness, yeah.
Oh.
Okay, thank you. Medications.
Medications.
We're deleting one and then there's a new one. It's pretty similar, actually. I feel like it's
It's almost identical.
It's identical except for um some specifics around.
I was looking, I'm like, wait, what?
I feel like it's very more clear though.
Okay.
And then there is, um, I feel like that is shorter, I don't know, there, one page shorter, one and a half pages. And then there is a part where um we can deny to the student's um self-medication if maybe they're not using it properly. We've talked to them and then that is one that like is very clear in the policy now of like, now you're not, you know, we said you can't take it out of class, you can't, we, let's talk about that and now you can't, you have to come to an office or whatever. So that was.
So self-medication are usually like typically like, like inhalers, things like that, yeah.
Yeah, but there's some other like, because you think kids in high school, they don't want to be going down and so there's exceptions of that.
Yeah.
But if we think that maybe there's been some signs that they're not using it, it's a, okay.
Gotcha.
What about like an EpiPen?
They carry an EpiPen.
They carry.
Yeah, yep.
It would do much better.
Probably not a lot of it happened.
They knew that they better have.
And that's one too, even on like um field trips, we always have them on SIC Bay and then there's a person who's trained.
Yeah.
On the field trip just in case.
And I love, and I'm assuming I didn't even notice that change.
Mine was just I wondering, it says current first aid CPR card for designated personnel. I thought that was pretty much a requirement for most staff.
No, so there's um a school requirement that you have to have um population, like one for a hundred or, no, that might not be the exact one. It's about that. We just, um, but it's not required for our license anymore. So I remember when I first started teaching, it would be part of TSBC and that's not a requirement anymore. And then uh Community Emergency and Poor Wellness Student Services is back, doing what our nurses are. Like we just actually retrained seventy six people so that we're in compliance for the state requirement for first aid and CPR. Um, and it is per uh per population for school, so we need to have a ratio, one to sixty.
Yeah.
If, if somebody's having a cardiac event and there is not somebody who has an A D qualification and somebody who does not, they can use it.
Yeah, that's a good Samaritan.
Okay, that's what, okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure.
And they open it up and it's certain.
Yeah. No, they're there for right now.
But yeah, no, that's a good Samaritan also, so if you're going around, even if we have, they happen to not have, um, that's it, yeah. They're totally protected and I think they'll try. Um, and then we have specific designated um staff, often our specialized classroom. We have more medical need in there. We offer it. There, people can also say like, I don't want to be trained, which is fine. Um, we're going to get administrators trained, a lot of secretaries are trained, and then um people who are typically maybe more like a dean of students, we're getting more of them trained just so that if there is an emergency, there's someone who can quickly come who is trained. So we're shifting that, but tracking, so we are in compliance now completely and um adjusting a little bit of how we're doing the training so that we can get more people trained.
Are bus drivers trained?
They're not currently trained.
Who's that?
Bus drivers.
They would call like anyone, or if a classroom emergency, we'd say call nine one one. And then our health room assistants and nurses do the training, their trainers.
Looks good.
Yeah, you have any questions? I mean, it is very similar if you.
Thank you. Graduation. Oh, we skipped my really awesome J E C A.
There it is, sorry.
Don't forget it. This is, this is a very simple one. It's mostly to align with the new language for the strategic attendance. And then just clarifying for the addition of a student who might have been expelled from another district, that the district can work to make, find, educate them.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not seeing.
J E C A, second one over.
Admission of resident students.
Oh, admission of residents, okay, thank you. I was hearing D instead of E.
Isn't it graduation? No. Okay, Lisa. Okay, I was just checking. Yes, well, bus drivers have to have first aid completion, but it's part of their O dot requirement.
Oh, oh, oh.
It's not run through us, but it is an O dot requirement.
You say first aid, but not second aid.
Oh, sorry.
You did?
It does say CPR. Nope, it doesn't, it just says first aid.
Yeah, I think it might just be first aid. Yeah, so that's why we don't put them in the calendar.
Yeah. Yep, it just says first aid.
Which means, yeah. Again, offer, and if people want it, and then we are getting that, um, more people trained. I need to.
I was just imagining, because I was just trying to remember there are alone adults. Okay, before we, the admission of resident students, like, there was eight and nine, so one was that we can deny uh students with a, more expulsion for students with weapons policy. And but then if a student comes into the district, then we have to provide them services?
We, we provide services for a student even in our district who, um, it's regular, for eight regular school admissions. So they wouldn't attend, they'd be on itinerant teaching.
Okay.
So the um number nine basically allows us to do an alternative, right? Uh, itinerant teaching is what we have in our district.
Okay.
And when we receive records, that's typically when we, that happens and we've said, oh, this child, and then we're calling the other district and trying to find out what happened. What was the offense to get them expelled?
Thank you.
The, the other option on nine is that we can choose not to um provide an education for them if they've been expelled from another district. That would be the other option on that sentence.
So that's the district, so that's the, that's district decision.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
We don't have to let them in the school, but we will provide.
Yeah.
An alternative, it's basically.
Yes. Yeah, especially if it's one of the big ones, like that's usually, that's the sessions that were like, they just, they were expelled from another um district, we're.
Being expelled is pretty serious, yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay. Um, we have, well, during our meeting, we have our next meeting will be Monday, February tenth at seven PM. A special session.
What, oh, special session.
On the same night as the OHS planning.
The planning night, it's on the same night as their OHS planning.
Um, yeah, the special session, we're waiting to uh see if we can get the documents for the purchase of a plant.
Yeah.
Of the land.